Frustrating tonight. So, we have the text of the development agreement attached to the agenda. Do, is there someone who wants to speak for the Woda Group? Or does the mayor want to speak about the details of what's contained in the development agreement?
I'll hit Debbie the highlights here. And I also have Nick Carr, Director of Utilities here with us. So if there's any questions you might have. The main thing, and we had a meeting with Craig Richards at Burgess and Nyphal, as council suggested, along with a couple of board members and the director of Tupper's Plains Water Sewer and the Woda Group. And really boiled down to what the Tupper's Plains Water System wants is really a tap, just like anybody else has on a good two-inch water line tap, because that's what they have in that area. That would be an emergency tap. It'd be metered, they would pay our usual out-of-city rate. But then if their 30,000 gallon tank, which is the one that serves that area and about 120 homes out of Stringtown, would, for some reason, they not be able to fill that either because of a break in their feed lines or everything else? They want the ability to be able to, for the, buy water from the city of Athens to refill the Stringtown tank and to serve those 120 customers. So we've done wording changes to this, that it's not an interconnect anymore, it's an emergency water tap to be installed with the appropriate backflow preventers so that we don't have any problem there. It would be in a vault. Their design has been done by Chuck Garvac of Chertan?
Chertan.
Chertan. Almost got it right. And that's been submitted to both Burgess and Nyphal for their approval, which they've approved it, and to Nick Carr, who has also approved it on this. And I think that the, if they've clarified for us, the reason we made the decision now is because this project is being built under a tax program of the IRS that was approved last year. And you have to have your, whatever is going to be taxed, have these tax advantage breaks to it so that you can do the 60 percent senior housing and give them the low rent that way. Has to be where at least a portion of the building has to be, be able to be occupied or certified by the state is available for occupancy by December 31st of this year. Yes?
I have a question on something you said, and I'll probably have some later on, so I will ask. We had such an agreement earlier that went through council with respect to Sunday Creek Water District. It was one of the first ordinances I did 100 years ago in council. And it was very specifically laid out. It was a council activity. And so it seems to me a little odd that this particular agreement to do emergency water and to have this overlapping service would be in a commercial agreement of the sort we have here. And I was wondering why we're not doing an ordinance on such a, on a specific thing with the water district rather than the commercial entity?
And that's, it's this draft.
Okay.
This is what we'd asked Burgess and Nyphal to do, was to look at other water systems and research standby emergency water service agreements between two different water districts. And this is the result of that. Ray has typed it up with the proper city of Athens and Tupper's Plains in it. We've sent it to their executive director for them to review. As soon as they agree to the basics that are in there, we'll go to city council, the law director, and then, you know, for council to adopt.
Okay.
What we're doing in here is we're providing that Woda Group will pay for this emergency tap. They will run the line 2,400 feet approximately to hook into where, near the Hope Drive area, out to their development. And then we're also in a development agreement granting sewer, which is a longer one. I think it's close to, what, 4,000 feet, as I recall.
Well, continuing on then, how much exactly are we charging for tap fees to the Tupper's Plains thing? I mean, because...
Well, that would be in the agreement here, although the Woda proposal says they would pay the cost of the water line. It's hard for us to relate because it's an emergency tap.
But it's a tap?
Oh, yeah.
And we have charges on taps now that we didn't have before.
But they're all based on use, unfortunately. So it's, I hadn't really thought about it.
Well, except for residential, single residential, it's about $1,000, isn't it?
Sure.
Okay, so we're talking about approximately, I mean, if it stops there, because that is probably connected beyond, I mean, since all, unless they're just out there by themselves and I haven't seen the maps. And then the third question is, is this going to be metered?
Yes.
And how, you know, and further on in the contract, you guys talk about an emergency, and how exactly would that be, would that be decided on? I mean, my question is, we have major plans going toward Albany, and now all of a sudden we're taking up another area where we don't have many users in between. I mean, it seems like a backhanded way and not a very sharp way to plan things, just to solve the problem for one small group. Just putting it right out there, which I never do.
Well, what are the costs to us?
We don't know. We don't know what the cost to the city is.
I don't know. There isn't.
There's no cost to the city.
No cost to the city.
That we know of, right?
Well, that's why we have the development agreement, which says that the cost of installation of the line, I mean, there would be a maintenance cost somewhere down the road, but we would also be selling water to the Woda apartment complex and receiving fees from them.
Who owns that?
Just like we would in normal.
I attended a meeting with the mayor, the service safety director, the representative from Tupper's Plains, folks from our utilities, and people from the Woda Group and Burgess and Nyphal last week to go over this. And the main things that we focused on were the concerns that were raised by council when this was brought before this committee previously. And the, the main issues that were brought up at that time were a concern about an interconnect, whether we'd be able to prevent backflow. And I think that it's being engineered so that that would be the case, there'd be a backflow preventer. There was also a concern about whether the, there was any C8 contamination that we need to be concerned about with Tupper's Plains. And they did send us a copy of their lab reports showing that they aren't detecting any C8 now. They've had, in the settlement from DuPont, additional filtration installed in their water systems. But with the backflow prevention, I think that's not an issue either way. And then I think that Member Patterson raised a question about what happens if this emergency tap gets turned on and then it ends up being a long-term thing. I think that the, the number of units that they have at that end of their system between us and the Stringtown tank is very few. And there were some numbers thrown around in the meeting about how, how much time it would take for us to even completely fill their tank if we need to. And it's, we've got more than enough capacity, I believe, if you wanted to let folks know what the actual capacity is, you know, what it would take us in our system, even if they need that water from us.
Right. In the agreement between Tupper's Plains and the city that is in the draft stage now, we're only agreeing to supply any surplus water that we have. And that surplus water is defined as totally by the city of Athens. The utility director would have to declare that there is surplus water, or we would not be able to meet their needs of the emergency basis. And that's what's going to be, that's in Article 2A and Section C, that we do not guarantee any level of flow, volume, or pressure at any time, and shall not be required to deliver to customer any volume of water in excess of what the city in its sole discretion determines to be surplus product. So that's where I'm...
You've really sharpened it up, and I appreciate that. But, let me ask another question. Is there a meter on this line that goes out the emergent, so-called emergency line? And what configuration does it have? Is it, is the backflow valve in the street? Is it up in their building? Where is it? How is this going to work?
Basically, there's going to be a vault down there.
Take a seat.
You have to be by the mic.
Now, sit down, you can sit down on a chair right there, yeah.
Let me sit down.
Mic's right there.
Basically, there's going to be a concrete vault with a Bilco lid, so we can have access to it. Our line will come up, or actually, Woda's line that they're going to construct is probably going to be either a six or an eight-inch line. It'll be reduced down to a two-inch line, go through this vault with a double check, check valve, backflow preventer on it, with two gate valves, not gate valves, but valve valves that have locking handles, so that the water couldn't be activated unless we were down there with keys to unlock it, to activate it.
So before you go to Bojinka, I have a question. How often do we inspect our backflow valves?
Annually.
Annually? Okay. And how is that recorded, reported? Is it just...
We've got a database at, at the Division of Water and Sewer that Nick Joseph takes care of, that we track all those backflow devices.
Okay. And how, what's the lifespan of a backflow valve?
Um, as long as you...
Well, I mean, just the average, Nick. I mean, it's not this valve.
I would say five years.
Thirty years? Five?
I would say five years.
How much do they cost?
I'm not sure what a two-inch would cost, but their, their minimal cost, I would say less than, less than $500.
Okay. Bojinka.
Okay. I just have a, kind of a basic question. Can this development be built without this water situation? I mean, what exactly?
No, it can't. No, it can't.
It cannot. Why?
Because it would not have a sewer service, and the two-inch line that serves that area, being a three-story building, would not be able to meet the fire codes of sprinkled system.
But, I'm sorry if this is, you know, I should know this, but in other words, the water needs to go to the development, but it doesn't need to go to Tupper Plains, right? In other words, the water needs...
That's true. But Tupper's Plain, the geographic area of service is Tupper's Plains, not the city of Athens. So they have to, in writing, release that property to the city of Athens for service of water.
Right.
But, yeah.
So, I mean, I understand that. So in return for that, they're saying, by the way, we would like this extra water.
Right, this emergency water tap, yes.
Okay. Is this... Well, you can ask that. I, I was going to say, what is the sense of, they have to release the property to us, right? Now, what is the sense of if, if we don't approve this extra valve, are they going to release the property? I mean, hasn't it been explored how necessary this agreement with them is?
In my conversations with them, they say they, they want, they won't release the property unless they have, this is a backup to supply water to their 100, approximately 120 customers that they're serving in that area through their Spring, Stringtown tank. I mean, that's crazy.
Isn't this sort of a backward way to do it? I mean, I mean, if you were sitting up here...
Well, they've asked for it before.
Well, we've never heard about it.
Right.
I mean, I wouldn't, I would have...
They've asked for an interconnect before, but we have, you know, basically thought, because of some of the problems they've had over the years, most recently, although they've supplied reports that that's been solved for now, but we just weren't...
Well, we can ask Nick about this.
I'm ready to recommend it.
Yeah, but we have chloride in our water, and it varies from time to time. And so a detect on C8 one time may not be, the next month it may not have a detect, and then again it might be, right?
Oh, right.
Okay, so we can't say they've solved the problem. I just threw away all my tuff-lon pots.
Bojinka has some...
We're trying to eliminate that as a situation by doing it in this manner, that we can't get water from Tupper's Plains under this system.
Unless somebody takes it out. Unless somebody, I mean, I've seen, removes it. Yeah, I mean, I've seen them do it in Flipping, or you know that, and it's happened, the backflow valve was removed, and there are other...
Well, see, for all water systems, EPA requires that we work together with other water districts to try to promote these interconnections. For example, in the city of Athens contingency plan, I don't know if any of you are familiar, but we have all three different water districts in the city of Athens, Sunday Creek, Tupper's Plains, and Leacs. And we have those places highlighted in our contingency plan in case the city of Athens has an emergency that we have someplace to get potable water from. So when the bioterrorism law modified the Safe Drinking Water Act in 2004, that was another additional requirement to do that. So that's the reason Mr. Poole was pushing so vigorously to, to get the interconnect or the tap.
Oh, my God. I have another thing for you.
Okay. Bojinka has something else, and then... Okay, yeah, I just want to expose, now, I mean, I guess my question is, how easy is it to check, since the backflow device seems to be divisive? How easy is it to check this device? Like, is it way underground? I mean...
No, it's going to be in a concrete vault, and if the device malfunctions, there'll be a stream of water coming out of the port in the device.
Okay. Nancy wants to know where it's located.
Where, you're going to say, is it going to be down by the street or up in the building?
I don't think it's been determined yet where the vault will be. I would assume somewhere, right away.
It's been a right-of-way usually.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but I just want to make sure. So that, this building will not be served at all by...
No. And I think Paul's been waiting to get in there.
So, the way I understand, we're going to go from a six-inch line or an eight-inch line to a two-inch line with a backflow and a emergency tap of some kind and a meter.
From an eight-inch to a six-inch to a two-inch.
From an eight-inch to a six-inch to a two-inch.
Two inches goes to Tupper Plains.
Okay. And you said the, their water tap's 30,000 gallons or 300?
I'm not sure what their stories are.
Their, others, I believe, said 30,000 gallons.
Okay. And it's good for us to do this, why exactly?
If they had an emergency break in their line, we could provide water to some of their customers.
Okay, but that, that helps them?
That helps them.
Okay, what helps us?
Their line is not sufficient size to help us as much as we can help them, because they only have a two-inch line in the area, and we have a 10-inch line, just right up the street.
They might be able to serve a few customers, that's by the way to go, as far as probably even Hope Drive.
Probably not. They might be able to service the new hosier clinic or something like that, if there was some kind of major outage.
Now, I seem to recall seeing a paper sometime a while back about Tupper's Plain having to have a different criteria, level of C8 content, I think. Was that the case? Or, it was, or something on the radio about three months ago. They're still at the same limits that we are.
Well, they supplied, Tupper's Plains supplied us with a letter from DuPont Corporate, that Tupper's Plain Chester Water Drinking Public Supply, A, PFO and PFOA analysis results for November of '06, it's the monthly monitoring, it's their report that they receive.
I think we got that as a...
Well, I thought the message I was getting from council, if you didn't want an interconnect, you wanted it one way. And so that's why we wrote it this way, although we have done some of the research. If, you know, council wants it as an interconnect, that it can go both ways. But from listening to Nick and talking to him, well, really, if we had an outage in that area, it really wouldn't solve our problem at all. They just don't have the capacity to get to us.
The language in the development agreement authorizes the city to negotiate this emergency tap. And then that requires council approval separately?
Oh, yes.
So any of the details of exactly how it's worked out will come through this process, too?
Oh, yes. That's why, yeah, I'm, I'm not authorized at all to enter into any agreement without council's authority to do it. As I say, I have the draft agreement. I can make copies of it if you want to look at it. Just recognize that Tupper's Plains has not had any input into it yet, and, but it, you know. It's right in the first paragraph, acting pursuant to ordinance number blank, pass blank, blank by Athens City Council.
I appreciate that, no? I mean, I'm glad we finally got to that point.
Carol?
My concerns largely have to do with the longevity of this agreement. Hearing that the backflow valves are five years isn't very reassuring either. But of course, the, the agreement is based on the development in that area at this time, and that it's quite low. We don't know where development is going to occur, and if there was growth in that direction, it might considerably change our situation. As well as, if we had development in other areas, but meanwhile, we're for some reason supplying Tupper's Plains, would we be unable to, you know, facilitate additions within our own city because we're supplying water to Tupper's Plains? And I will say that, yes, I agree with Nick that the EPA is very anxious to have communities do support agreements so that we all work together on having water for the world, so to speak. But I do think we need to look out for our own circumstances as well.
The water treatment plant, and Nick can jump in anytime he wants, we, has a capacity as certified by EPA of 5 million gallons per day, and that's basically running 24 hours a day, and, you know, it's, it's a big operation. We're currently producing most days 3.1 to 3.3, and that's in the peak season when the university's in session. So we have the capacity, plus we have, what? How many, almost a million and a half in storage tanks throughout the city? Because we have to think of, Highland has so much in Hope, and Curtis, and Blackburn Tower, and all, you know, all the others. So there is an adequate capacity now, though the plant was also, was built to such, although it does not have the pumps or the water wells to do it, to go up to about 7 million gallons per day, or is it 7.2?
7 million.
7 million. But that would take additional water wells, additional pumping, additional treatment beds. It would take an expansion of the plant, but it's potentially there that we could do that.
Right.
But right now, our, we're running at 61%, 62% capacity most days, which is well within, you know, EPA, I think, you have to hit, start hitting 75% or 80% before they start growing any concern and saying, well, what is your development plan, and how, you know, are you doing that?
However, we also run under the possibility that our wells could fail...
Sure.
...at any point. And, and we already have been looking at the possibilities for additional wells, and the pickings are slim. It's not very encouraging to add to our water supply. But, as I said, my, my concerns are more in the long term for this agreement than on a three- or four-year basis, what the implications are for our water supply.
Well, see, part of it is, in my mind at least, and Nick and I've had this discussion a couple of times, we have three water systems that are on various points of the city's border. And you have to really look at, okay, where does water systems not exist right now? I mean, if you talk about expansion in the other direction to Albany, which the master or the comprehensive plan does, it's all served by Leacs. We would have to negotiate to supplement them. I mean, the main thing that we have to offer that nobody around us has the closest distanci is a sewer system. You know? And, and that creates development. Questions, because there are areas out there that, under the criteria of the Health Department right now, you might own property, and you could never build anything on it because you don't have enough proper land to be able to do your own septic system. That's, that's the hindrance to development. But when we look at inside the corporate limits of Athens, and yes, we have some developed properly, but is that going to be a 40% growth in water usage, or 35 even, to what we are currently producing per day? And our analysis really says, no, I don't think we can use up that 30% or so that we have an excess capacity right now. So I don't see it as an intermediate-range problem at all, unless the best council starts building 20-story buildings, and we're going to have to have a pressure problem and such. But that's nowhere in our code, under our current direction. We're, we're wranged almost by other water systems, and it's just like this one with Tupper's Plains. They want to protect their territory. They know that, yes, higher demand usage could be done if the city of Athens had part of that territory, just as Leacs knows that, because we have sewer. And you can have much more intense development because of the sewer. Their capacities of growth are more limited by far than the city's. There's more land out there, but you have to have more land to process your own sewer.
In the agreement. Jim?
But, I, I think that agreement that the mayor has that we haven't seen yet, that with, between the two water systems, you say that it clearly says, we only agree to sell you surplus water...
Right.
And it's up to Nick or somebody in, in that department to determine whether we have surplus, or whether, whether we...
Right. Sometimes it's the same emergency you might be under. I mean, it could be an overhaul from the area of drought or something like that, that you need the excess. Well, we're affected by that also. But if it's a water line break, and they're going to be out for two days, it's not, no particular problem for us, unless we are able to have major fires or something, and we'd have to supply that. And that would take our priority, of course.
One other possibility that was suggested, it doesn't sound like the, it doesn't sound like the initial engineering went down this road, but was that there, it could actually be physically not connected unless it's needed? Would that do anything to extend the life of that backflow preventer, or...
There could be a union put into that line where it would actually be separated, and you could go down and couple it up.
So, I, I think there are some possibilities we can explore. Paul had something else?
Uh, yeah. You mentioned, Nancy mentioned some other agreements previous. Are we connected to other water systems right now?
No.
We had negotiated, but it didn't go through, Sunday Creek.
We supply water to the plains, but we're not connected with any other water system.
How about if we amend the agreement to ask Woda to pay $60,000 a tap fee for this emergency line? I mean, then there'd be something in it for us, about half of the usual fee.
Goodness. Thank goodness. That's a rhetorical question.
No! I mean, we can amend it.
Sure.
I think that I'm hearing from members of council that the specificity in the agreement that you're working on, sounds like it addresses a lot of the concerns, but I think people want to see it.
Sure.
I'm inclined, I know there's a timeline in terms of, you know, the, the project funding, but I'm inclined to table this until we have both things and have them go through on the same timeline. And if we have to have a special session to get it done at the same time, we can do that. But I think it would give people an opportunity to look at the language and, you know, make sure that it's, you know, we don't get one thing ahead of the other.
Okay.
I see a lot of heads nodding. That might be an okay way to proceed? Okay. And we can talk about the tap fee between now and then also.
I guess I would also point out that our law director several times told the representative of the Woda Group that council had issues with what was going... of the WADA group that council had issues with what was going on. I mean, so, what we always say in the card center, a lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on ours. And so, I think that's what we have to go with. We have issues, and we're going to get them resolved. So maybe listen to us next time. Troublesome people that we are.
I think that's all for this committee, unless somebody has miscellaneous items? Okay?
I'll scroll in and do most of them.
I'm sorry. Please.
David Cooper from the WADA group.
Mr. Cooper, the podium would be better, probably.
Okay, thank you. As we try to work through the issues regarding the emergency water line, are there other issues with the development that we should be considering during this timeframe that we'll be working on the, on the emergency water line issues?
I haven't heard anyone bring anything else up, including, I mean, the last time-
Right.
...this was before council. Paul?
Um, how much discussion have you had with the county commissioners since they have to relinquish this place for annexation?
The, the, the section of the annexation law that we would be working under, it's not a discretionary act on the party, part of the county commissioner. So we have not talked to them, but we, we wouldn't anticipate any problems with that part of the procedure either.
Okay.
What do you mean by it's not discretionary? If you request it, they're forced to allow you to annex?
Yeah, correct. Rick, do you want to talk about that?
100% annexation petition cannot object to the commitment. Rick Oremus, counsel for WADA and Beaumont Green. Jim, it would be 100% of the owners signing the petition, seeking annexation. There will actually be two owners, and that does not require any approval other than for the commissioners to simply release it to be annexed into the city. But it's not discretionary if all the property owners petition together.
Okay. Then I think we'll have another opportunity to talk about this. So, I'm not hearing anybody raise any additional issues at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Back to you, Bill.
Okay. Well, now, let's go into the regular session of Athens City Council's honor about 7:30 PM, and we do have a quorum with all members of council present for the first time in a while. Communications, are there any communications that anyone would like to chair? Member Wild?
I would like to just reiterate, there is going to be a meeting for the Ohio Consumers' Council about AEP service and tree-cutting practices Thursday, January 25th, at 6:00 PM at Ohio University, Baker University Center, room 4, 242.
And there are, there's a protocol.
What?
And comments have to be in a certain protocol, right?
Comments would have to be sworn in, but other than that, you are welcome to come and say your piece.
Other communications? Reports and communications from other elected officials? Mayor Abel?
Just briefly, as many of you may have heard on the media today, we've had a road slip on Mulligan Road. I'm sure Bill is aware of it, if he tried to go home back to the office as well.
I found it coming to work, coming down the hill, when they were putting the barricades up.
Yes. So we had, over the holiday weekend late, we had, we believe from, from what Andy can ascertain, is the road started to slip, there's been some problems in that area of small slips in the past. That then broke the water line, which made it a really nice, good slip.
That's why.
Probably about 40 feet long, total recovery area maybe of 80 feet, lost about half of the right-hand lane as you go up the hill. And we're still assessing it, of course. Andy was in meeting with Ray and briefly with myself late this afternoon. Our very rough estimates will, will be wide-ranging. We'll go anywhere from 57,000 to 226 as of tonight. We're going to have some other, we've called in RJM, and they've looked at it also for us. We're exploring, you know, different options. Even through the weekend, we'll be having a consulting engineer that we've arranged to have come in, which has a, a method of repair that's a little different than what we've used in the past. But they, Andy had heard about this through Summit County and through other meetings prior to his deployment, but he wants to explore that, and I think it's reasonable to do that since we seem to have too many slips. And of course, as we all know, the ground is very saturated right now after the rain. But just to alert you that at some point in the very near future, I hope to be back and say, "Well, under emergency basis, we're going to have to allocate some funds to repair that slip." But I don't really have a whole lot more details of it than that right now.
For the council members that haven't seen it, I will tell you, it is impressive.
Well, it goes down about three feet.
I picked up the cell phone after coming down the hill. They were just putting up the barricades-
Road closed barricades, yes.
...when I was on my way to work. And when I got to work, I was greeted with one of my nurses that said that she had ruined two brand-new tires and split a rim on her car, and I ordered to go see the mayor and to plead her case with him. I was busy otherwise, but, uh-
Gee, I appreciate the help.
Anytime, Mayor Abel. But it is, it really is impressive.
So, the water line broke on this, so that's why there's a boil order on the South Side? Is that it?
Well, that-
Okay. Is there any other utilities under there that's in jeopardy?
Not that we know of right now, but I did not ask. Usually see a water and a sewer line are separated by a bit. I don't know if there's any problems.
Okay.
None was indicated to me by Andy with it, but as I say, we haven't, you know, we've got one day's worth of work into this, and a lot of the concern was getting everything barricaded off, getting a press release out so that residents would know. No one's private driveway is blocked by the residents in between, you know, where we got the road closed signs can still get to their homes one way or the other, either from Longview or up to Mulligan. But we're, you know, we're going to have to do a lot of traffic maintenance to make sure people stay out of that area, so especially don't want garbage trucks going down that, et cetera-
No, you don't.
...in that condition right now. So, we were more concerned of the safety aspects of it today. Did do some, you know, Andy and Jeff Maiden did look at it, gave me some rough estimates to bring to you tonight. But also, they said, very rough estimates, and-
Okay.
...they need more exploratory time. They haven't decided yet whether they want to do tiny test core borings or not, or rod probes or other, other types of things to see where's bedrock in this particular situation, and what's the condition of the soil underneath that's still there. We know it's wet and needs to dry out a little bit before we really get a, a good handle on it.
Okay.
City Auditor Kathy Hatt?
No, no report.
We had a law director here, but I think he wandered away in yesterday.
I know. He's applying the law for skipper today.
If he were here, my guess is he would remind us that there is an executive session planned at the end of our agenda tonight. I'm sure he is going to give us some information on some pending litigation. Ordinances for third reading. Oh 40, oh 148 oh 6, an ordinance authorizing a development agreement with Edwards, Athens Student Housing One LLC, produced by Councilmember Phillips.
Mr. President, I move that we table oh 148 oh 6.
Second.
The reason for tabling this amendment is that during the course of our discussion, there have been questions about whether, or, but the reason for tabling this ordinance is that there have been questions about whether approval of the development agreement would constitute any kind of tacit approval of the project itself. It's the opinion of the law director that if council approves this, we would have to approve the project unless it required extraordinary variances. That's the language that was used in the email that I received. And it's my sense that no one wants to undermine the regular planning process in the city of Athens, and that the project is before the Planning Commission, they'll be having a public hearing, and by tabling this ordinance, we can, when we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, bring everything related to the project through at the same time, rather than having to make a decision now that could have, could affect our position regarding the project as a whole. Since we haven't seen the recommendation from the Planning Commission, we haven't seen the engineering on the project.
Motion in a second to table ordinance 148 oh 6 for their discussion. Member Wild?
So if we table it and wait for the approval of the Planning Commission, and we want to alter the development agreement that is separate from the actual plat approval? So therefore, we would not need a supermajority to change any aspect of this?
Our parliamentarian is out of the room, but it is coming through as a separate ordinance, so I would think that it would continue to be a separate ordinance.
We'll try to get some answer to that, Paul, if we can before the vote. Member Bang?
You're looking for the parliamentarian, here's the contrarian.
The parliamentarian is, what would we do without our contrarian?
I would propose to vote no, and to start over. I think that some people have found enough flaws in this particular agreement to, to be concerned about it. Therefore, I'm voting no on tabling and going to vote it down, and then hopefully start over again.
Paul, could I ask you, now that the law director has come back into the room to restate your question?
The question I had, we're talking about tabling this development agreement until the Plan Commission has an approval up or down of this development. This is Summit on Coates Run. The question I have is, are we locked into elements of the development agreement if so approved by the Planning Commission? And I'm not sure. The way Debbie's, Phillips is saying, is that they are two separate ordinances, and therefore, they wouldn't require a supermajority to change any aspects of this.
You're going to have to give, you're, I don't understand your, you're, give me the question again, Paul.
We have a development agreement.
Yes.
We're going to table it. We're going to table it until the Plan Commission makes a decision. If the Plan Commission, Commission makes a decision and a recommendation, and the elements of the Planning Commission mimic this development agreement, are we locked into parts of this? And to change it, do we require a supermajority?
If you do the development agreement, that is a contract that, between the city, and it would be my opinion that if you wanted to deviate from that, that contract, you're going to have problems. The development agreement, to the extent it would require, if it required, there's a PUD, which I assume is what you're talking about, coming through the Planning Commission, requires variances, it would be my opinion that you would be, like, committing to development agreement, you'd be committing to any normal and reasonable variances that might be expected. If there are extraordinary variances, then I don't necessarily think you'd necessarily be committing to them. That's about as much as I can answer at this point. You, you do, when you, and when you develop, and sign a development agreement, you are in, in fact, saying that you are somewhat in favor of the project and that, in the normal process, if it goes through the, the stages that you would in fact vote for.
Okay.
And if you don't, then I think there may be some legal ramifications.
Other comments? Member Bishop?
I have a question. This is really unusual protocol. Is it typical that we would get a development agreement prior to the Planning Commission's decision on a project? I mean, is this normal or is this abnormal? I guess that's my question.
In my, in my opinion, this is the normal, if you're going to go the development route, development agreement route. Clearly, you would do the development agreement prior to ever submitting your formal plans and proposals to the city.
Okay.
In some cases, that when you do a development agreement, the property's not in the city, and so you would almost have to do the development agreement if you're going to go that route.
Okay. So this sequence, the development agreement and then the Planning Commission, is typical?
It's, it's typical if you go that route. You know, the city is at a situation where you have to decide whether you're going to continue to use, you know, development agreements.
Okay.
You don't have to do development agreements in advance of projects. You simply could wait and see what comes to you.
Okay.
Development agreements, though, are, are, is a tool that's used to encourage development of-
Right.
...property.
Right.
It allows the developer to know in advance what the situation is, and he can take that in and line up his financing.
Prior to going through all the work that it would take to bring forth a full plan to the Planning Commission?
Right.
Okay.
So it's, development agreement is used as a development tool, quite frankly.
Right.
But you don't have to go that way.
Okay.
You could simply not do a development agreement and wait and see what comes through.
Okay. Then I'm leaning a certain way. Okay.
Member Bang?
I guess that I would ask if, you know, I'm mainly thinking back and saying, the two that I can think of would be this one and university estates that were big, you know, substantial as compared to a lot. So that, that's what typical means, university estates and this one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask you a question? Is-
Well, when I talk typical, I'm talking about-
The largest, yeah, the largest, yeah. But we, our experience has been those two.
Our experience would be those two, but when I talk typical, I'm talking larger.
Thank you.
Other members of council? Would you say that, I'm sorry. I looked over there and I saw no hands. Member Patterson?
We were slow.
Okay.
I understand the implications if we pass the development agreement. We've talked about that, and we kind of all are on the same page on that. What would be the status if we turned down the development agreement at this point? What are the implications there?
Are you asking me again?
Yes, I am. Because the question is, does that mean the project's finished?
No, not necessarily. It just means that the developer doesn't have a clear roadmap on how the city is going to react to his project, and he would be compelled then to either negotiate a development agreement that the city would pass, or proceed on with the project to the Planning Commission and go through that process.
Okay.
So it doesn't, doesn't kill the project-
Right.
...necessarily, no.
Um, but it would imply that change needs to be made before it would be an acceptable This is yet another one of those confusing votes of, you know, the advantage of tabling versus voting yes or no right now. I, I mean, there's some advantage to give the developer a clear idea of where feelings are at this point, which would be an up or down vote. The other side of it is to table it until we have more information from the Planning Commission.
The normal reason for tabling would be because you need more information-
Right.
...to consider something, you know? You're not ready to vote on it at this point in time.
Member Sands?
I was just going to comment, I think I understood Member Wild's question to be asking, if we table this ordinance now, and it sits on the table while the Planning Commission deliberates on the, on their recommendation with regards to the development, building the development, and then that comes to us, that, they would still be, they'd be then two separate ordinances.
They are two separate ordinances.
They would remain two separate ordinances.
The question would really mean, is would there ever be a reason to take it off the table once they presented their proposal through the Planning Commission, you know? Because you would have already done everything.
Yeah. But-
Would there be any need for a development agreement in that situation?
Member Wild?
Parts of this development agreement would still have to be read through and agreed to, TIFs, the, the water line, and other, other aspects of that, regardless of the PUD, wouldn't it? Would that be in the PUD? Is that what you're saying?
They would have to be implemented by ordinances, later ordinances, the, the TIF and so forth. But if you do the development agreement, it's a stat, it's a contract, so I think, absent some extraordinary situation, you would be agreeing that you would do the TIF. But to implement it, yes, you would have to adopt additional legislation.
Question for myself. And maybe it's semi-philosophical, but if council does a development agreement ahead of the Planning Commission process, do they- do they take more control over what they are saying they would find acceptable to finally come back before them and gives the developer more of a guideline where if it goes through just the Planning Commission process and comes back before us, then we only have, pretty much, I don't think I've ever seen council in nearly 20 years I've sat here, amend successfully with a seven out of eight vote, or six out of seven votes, because it's pretty much up or down on what the Planning Commission has sent forward. Is that correct? Am I reading that?
No, I agree with you. I think the development agreement does set forth a roadmap for the development.
Now, I'm not speaking to the quality of this development agreement.
And probably would give a clearer indication of the direction that council would like to see the developments proceed. But it isn't the only way you could impact that. But I do think it is.
Just while you were being treasurer, Bill, we did successfully amend the University Courtyard and made it a thinkable project. We got some money for the schools and some other things. I mean, as good as that one could be. And you would know, this, an earlier permutation of this also, I think the developer took one look at what council was saying and decided to go and be a silent partner or something equivalent.
Okay. Are there other comments? We have Member Patterson.
One of my major concerns about this development, and has been from day one, is the size. It's too large for the space. It's too many people. It's like a city in itself. There is nothing in the development agreement that addresses number of units or anything like that. It could go up. There's nothing in here that addresses that. And I find that a concern if the passage of this implies approval of the project.
Let's remember, the motion before us right now is to table. And let's, I know. And it does get confusing. And that's why really, all of our comments should be on tabling of the ordinance. Are there any further comments on tabling of the ordinance only? All those in favor of tabling of ordinance 14806?
Aye.
Please show your hands. Those opposed? The motion to table the ordinance fails.
So then I need to move to adopt 14806.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there further discussion on the ordinance?
I think I share a lot of the concerns that people have about the size of the project. The different proposals that have come through on this site, I think, have raised a lot of concerns. I think it's a sensitive site with slip-prone soils. And there is great concern in the community about the larger impact on the city in terms of view sheds and vistas. I think that one of the questions that we'll need to consider at some point in this project is whether something is going to happen there. And, you know, what we can do to make it be most appropriate and sensitive to the site and, you know, best meet the needs and concerns expressed in our community.
Other comments? Member Bishop.
I think that this developer, I mean, I think, Debbie, you've brought up some really important points. And this is a very, you know, we are passing, we hope, or looking at a comprehensive plan that talks about hillsides and hilltops and view sheds. I'm surprised, actually, the developer's not here tonight.
He called and.
He was told that it was gonna be tabled, that I was gonna make that motion.
Oh, I see. Because in a way, I think this particular developer is probably a very responsible one. And, you know, I think it's kind of poor timing and poor place that he's looking at. But I just do wanna say that I think he would probably be a responsible developer. But I think this particular area is not appropriate for the kind of development that's being proposed.
Other comments? Member Wile.
Again, what we're hearing is the developer's fairly flexible. But the size is still too big. It's still taking 30 feet off the top of the hill. The dirt's being moved. Philosophically, I have problems with tiffs because you're really stealing from the county. And I know I represent the city, and we should be able to pick on little guys. But I have problems with that. It accelerates growth as much as any other gasoline accelerates fires. I have no problem with some of the lines that were talked about in terms of building, but I think it is still flawed.
Are there any other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 14806? Those opposed?
Aye.
The ordinance is defeated unanimously. Ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 0107, an ordinance adopting the comprehensive plan for the city of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith.
Bill?
I'm sorry.
Put a mark on the wall.
Greg, did you wish to speak?
Got three.
On ordinance 03, let me read it. Ordinance 0307, an ordinance closing that portion of Court Street from President Carpenter on October 27th and 28th, 07, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend. Member Patterson, did you wish to speak to this first?
I do.
Mr. President, this is the second reading of this ordinance. However, there are a number of people who are present who wish to comment on it. And so I think it's appropriate to open the floor for that. Just in terms of a brief reminder of basically what we're looking at and what's happened since our last meeting. I did meet with Student Senate last week along with Dr. Kent Smith from Ohio University. And at that meeting, Dr. Smith announced that the university is charging $25 per overnight guest for Halloween weekend in the dorms. This will most likely make up most of the university's expenses for Halloween. And I say, good for them. They have found a solution to the hemorrhaging costs from their perspective. And now it's time for the city to get off the dime and do the same thing. We have been talking about this for over a year now. And we need to have a way to recoup our taxpayers' payments for the event of Halloween. There's been much said about, are we trying to get rid of Halloween? Probably some people are. It certainly is not my thought. But I absolutely believe that we need to have an appropriate way to recoup the money that goes into Halloween. That is the number one reason for the consideration of the fence and the charging admission. You can't very well charge admission without having some kind of restriction around the area. You can't just walk down the street and ask everyone for the money. The second part of the reasoning is for safety reasons. This is something that has the endorsement of the police department and the streets department. There certainly have been instances in the last few years where there has been threats of problems in various places in the city. And of course, the city, the city council, I personally, and everyone in the city is vitally concerned with the health and safety of all citizens. Students, non-students, anyone that is visiting on Halloween weekend or any other weekend. The police department feels that they could better supervise, moderate, whatever you wanna call it, the activities if the main portion of the party were fenced and they had that control over it. We have had incidents every single year of people hurt. Some inside the party area, some outside the party area. The police are hopeful that this would be an opportunity to have more of a gauge of who is here. Do we want to discourage out-of-town guests? There's some out-of-town guests that I believe we absolutely want to control and have some effect upon. And if someone reads the paper and says, oh, they're going to have security, they're going to have a fence, they're going to charge admission, I won't go to Athens, most likely, they weren't coming for just an enjoyable evening. Last year, over 40 cars were stopped on 33 coming from the north on the way to Athens on Halloween night that were interrupted before they ever got here. I say bravo to the state patrol for helping us in that way. But we need to help ourselves as well. And if bad guests stay away because the party is more supervised and controlled, I say good. There still, regardless of whether there is a fence or whatever else, the charging admission, we can continue to work on enhancing the activities that occur on Halloween evening. I've talked to many students about that very thing. I'm actually working with some students on a project towards that direction. They have some very exciting and fun ideas. Not ideas necessarily that will bring in buckets of money, but might enhance the event so that it is interesting enough that people might want to come and pay the $5 or whatever entrance fee we might decide upon. I believe that Halloween can be an inviting, positive, safe, and non-cost-for-the-city event. And those are the goals that I have in bringing forward this piece of legislation to the city. And I know there are students and non-students here to speak to this issue.
Other members of council first. Member Wile.
Carol, thanks for doing all the work. It sounds like you had a thrilling time at the Student Senate.
Actually, the students were extremely respectful and asked some very good questions, much the same type of discussions that we've had here. I also felt that the A-News did an outstanding job of outlining that meeting and what occurred. It was very, very accurate and very well done in a very fair way.
Other members of council. Member Bishop.
Yeah, I also want to thank Carol for all the work she does on this because it is a lot. And I just wanna point out that in this ordinance, which sounds like it talks about closing the streets, also has a section that says that the mayor and safety service director, at their discretion, would make a decision about the fence. So that this ordinance doesn't actually say fence or not. It leaves that up to their discretion. And so I have a couple of things. I mean, I personally feel that that kind of abdicates our responsibility as city council members. I think it's a major public event. And it should be left to us, who maybe are more, are more, kind of, I'm gonna say, available for a lot of public discussion sometimes. So I think that's part of the ordinance that I really don't feel comfortable with. And I also wanna say that.
Would you like me to? I don't know if you were here when I explained that or not. That was at the request of the streets and the service safety director and the police so that they would have some latitude on if, even the week before the event, it was clear that that was not in our best interest, that they could make a decision. And this was something that I conferred with the law director on, that this would be an acceptable language to include there.
And I appreciate that. And I appreciate their, you know, work and dedication to it. And if they're going to study it, which I believe that this must imply, you know, I would like to see maybe that, you know, the results of their thinking and study brought forward for us to make a decision. Now, also, it's an event that I have mentioned before, I believe, has some possibility to be self-sustaining. And Carol is cooperating in this, thank you. I'm having some students in a class actually try to come up with a plan that would be a major event plan, which would, if they can come up with something that would cover the costs, et cetera. So I think there's a lot more to be done about this. I think last year, your reaching out to the university students really helped kind of bring some more focus on it. And hopefully, you know, as this, we kind of move forward toward Halloween, more students will come forward, more organizations, and maybe the university itself would be a little more cooperative in planning this event.
There are other members of council. Members of the audience wish to speak to this. Someone would calling Mr. Halloween.
Jonathan Holmberg. I live in New Marshfield. I'm very proud of being called Mr. Halloween. I think that it takes a certain amount of energy and go at it to do what I do as far as, when it comes to Halloween. One thing I did, I read the article in the paper, and one of the issues that it addressed was sponsorship, although there was no mention of me in the article in the paper. And I just presumed then that no one mentioned that I go out and collect the money myself to put on the stage shows and pay for the security that we provide for the stage area. That's sponsors that are businesses in this town who gleefully and gladly sponsor Halloween. What I did when I started to read articles about Madison said this, Madison said that, was, I called Madison. And I talked to, I'm gonna slaughter his name, but I believe it's Stedlinsky or Stedlasky. But I spoke with him for a good half an hour about why Madison did what they did, how they did what they did, and what it cost them to do what they did. And he had an incredible staff of people. He works for the city. This gentleman who ran the Halloween party and organized, he works for the city. He's in the city rec parks department. Everybody that worked for him and that did the wall was a paid employee. They did it out of concern for direct safety of their uptown area, that the businesses came to them and asked them to do this because of a safety concern that was riotous. Now, we had, I look at Madison more as our past. They're desperate because they're looking at situations that we've dealt with for many, many years, 15, 16 years myself involved with. And we've tried other avenues to quell that violence uptown. And I think that you can look at how things have gone over the years uptown. I like to look at our history, how we've run this event as an organization. And it seems to me that when we're talking about problems, we're talking about the outlaying areas. We're talking about not on Court Street, not where the traditional party has always been. Because we addressed those problems for 20 years and more. So if we're doing this out of purely a financial avenue, then I think that, again, we should call Madison and find out what their costs actually were.
I have those figures, Jonathan.
Pardon me?
I do have those figures.
Now, in my conversation with him, he said it wasn't a matter of making money, that they were prepared to spend what it took to make a safe environment uptown. And they're also, they're not like us. Their uptown area is a pedestrian mall. They have a cross street that they block off, and they set up two stages. And then they have a pedestrian mall that the majority of the people walk up and down. So they don't have 20 alleys that they have to deal with. Now, we're gonna fence off every alley? I really, it's just a matter of serious questions that I think have never really been addressed yet about how we're gonna do a wall, how it affects the party uptown. And I think that's been really positive, what we've done uptown. I think that the wall, in some respects, and I think we have discussed this, is gonna push people and keep people off of Court Street. Now, that's where we traditionally have been seeing problems in the last few years. You see them down on Mill Street, Stimson. We've had them on High. I walk Congress Street every year during Halloween, and it's a pretty chaotic scene on Congress Street. So to me, the fence also deters people from coming up to what we consider the traditional party. Now, there's no entertainment. Now, there's no entertainment down on Mill Street. One thing I did find out from Madison as well, do you know what they do during Halloween? They go around and the city shuts down every party. There's no off-campus party going on until two in the morning serving twenty-five kegs of beer. They shut it down. They don't allow that to happen. It's a safety issue. And that's the way they look at that. So to me, unless you're going to coordinate those kind of efforts, shutting down the parties in conjunction with fencing off the uptown, charging admission, I see a majority of people staying in those neighborhoods where there's no lights, there's residential areas, there's, you know, every opportunity to cause trouble you can't cause uptown. So, again, I call the Circleville Pumpkin Fest people because I want to see how in the world these people do that and have such a great time doing, get all that positive publicity. If you can't constantly advertise that it's a negative party, you're going to get negative influences. We've never advertised, I don't recall the city ever having a positive approach to Halloween. Every year, I pick up the paper after Halloween, and I think, man, we did a great job. The city police department, everybody came together again and did a super job. And everybody was out till five o'clock in the morning, you know, doing their job. And then I pick up the paper the next day, and they're saying things like poured seventeen thousand more dollars down the drain. Now, how is the safety of our citizens, the, you know, the control of our city, how is that money down the drain? Don't you think Circleville spends money on seed? I mean, you can't put on an event of that magnitude and not spend some money. It's got to be done. Now, as far as increasing security because of a fence, we're already spending all this money on security. So to me, it's, how much is the actual cost going to be? That's where I'm at. And how does it affect the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee? Is it going to change how we do things? We do this out of our own pocket. I have volunteers to work the stage in Madison. They pay people to work the stage. They pay security around the stage. I go out and I get people to control that stage every year, and I don't pay them. They work for a lousy T-shirt. So to me, it's important to have someone organizing events. And I agree, we've got ideas, we've been working on ideas for Halloween, but unless you've got somebody and a vehicle to push these ideas and make them happen, they're just ideas. So twenty good ideas without amplification aren't going to help us. We need to find people and organizations to do those things. I run the two stages on Court Street. It's a lot of work. It's bringing together a lot of people, a lot of money, and a lot of logistics. My budget's wide open. I have a very meager budget, a very small budget. They laughed at me in Madison. He said if I could do that with that amount of money, it'd be a miracle. And the cooperation between the city and us is overwhelming. He said that he gets no cooperation from the city of Madison at all. So, again, I don't think we should get wrapped up in comparing ourselves completely to Madison. It's a different situation. Their fence was directly for safety, had nothing to do with money. They were willing to spend money for safety. And so to me, safety is an important issue. That's why we do what we do. I'm all in favor of other groups coming together and doing other events. I've got some great ideas myself. So I think that's where we need to focus as well. And I think that if a fence goes up and it works, I think that's a great idea. I just want to know how it's going to affect me and everybody else that organizes Halloween.
Thanks, Jonathan. Let's get everybody's comments.
Well, I would agree. I just was going to comment that we would like to see the accounting, the figures that he sent to Madison because we do not see those, and to remind him that that money does not come back to the city. It is the city that puts out seventy-five thousand dollars. But we do need that accounting.
There's no other city events that the city is involved with that costs the city any money?
To keep-
Say homecoming. Does the city put any money out for homecoming that comes back to them?
Jonathan, we're going to need to start fitting our, I'm going to have to start enforcing our time limit. There's quite a few people that want to speak, but I really appreciate your comments. Jonathan and I worked many years together on Halloween. Who else would like to speak before council? Please. The rules of council provide that you state your name, your address, and that you try to limit to three minutes. We'll also ask that if other people have made the points, let's not repeat the same points.
Sure. I'm Tim Bonville. I'm a resident of thirty Station Street, apartment F. I come tonight just with a couple of questions as a concerned member of the city, not of the Student Senate. Some of the language within the ordinance at hand, I just have a little bit of discrepancy with. I'm not really sure where exactly, what exactly the want of the city is, specifically regarding where the fence will be erected. It does state at President Street that the streets will be blocked off with no traffic, vehicular traffic from President Street by the New Baker Center down to Carpenter. I had a few questions on where the council was considering the fence to be erected.
Again, it was, the idea was to have the Halloween area the same as it's been in the past, that's, the language is identical to last year, and then let the streets people decide exactly how that fence goes out.
As far as width and concerns of whether it's going out to Congress and college, is that the same?
And exactly where, yes.
Is that the same?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't want to intrude on Jonathan's points, but I have been able to contact Wisconsin myself. And one of the key things that they, that the city has said about, said about the celebration and fencing it in was that it was a success. And I was wondering if the city has come up, the city of Athens has come up to any plans to define the party as being a success after it potentially has fenced it in.
Thank you.
Is that, that's, I guess it's not so much of an open-ended question I was wondering.
When we ask people to come before council, it is not to engage-
Right. I didn't want to necessarily have-
... but Paul-
My response is that we get some reimbursement for the money. I mean, essentially, I like Halloween except for the seventy thousand dollars that we drop every year. If this was a flood, I'd want to prevent the flood from happening again. If this was a slip, you'd want to fix it so it doesn't happen again in terms of cost. So reimbursement of some kind is really what I'm looking for. Normally, I voted against the past Halloween ordinances, mostly because of the cost. So therefore, any type of reimbursement. And from my point of view, three cars got torched in my ward last year. Things like that, as much as we have, you know, we talk about how safe it is up on the Court Street area. We have problems in the outlying areas, and we don't have enforcement because all the police are uptown for the most part. So these are the considerations I have. You know, safety is one, but also the cost.
Member Bishop.
Well, I was, I was thinking that, I think your notion that we ought to define what means success actually is an important one. And I think money, you know, some reimbursement might be some, but I think as people who work on Halloween, you know, maybe it should be known, better to be known as a fun and pleasant event than not. So I would like to add that in, that there are lots of activities, that people are having a good time, and it might be a broader, you know, group of community members. But I think you're making a very good point.
Okay. So finally, just kind of to articulate overall what I'm trying to say here, is that because of all these questions that it seems that are still kind of open-ended, and because of safety concerns that could be dispersed off into the side streets, I'd have to say as a member of the city of Athens that I'd be opposed to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Estack. I'm a resident at one forty-nine Mill. I'm also a student at Ohio University. And I also had a couple of questions that I just wanted to throw out there. You don't have to answer immediately, but a few things that I know myself and a couple of other students would also like to know. First being that with Court Street being blocked off, will there be, will the street be accessible to ambulance or medical personnel in case of an emergency? And will it be easy access, like immediate response? Okay. And then another thing I was concerned about was you, it was mentioned that, you know, with, if the party or crowds were to move off campus, that we may have to increase security off campus. Would that come with a price? Would we have to spend more money on that security, increasing that police force? And then because of that, would we be taking away from that revenue you would hope to make with, you know, the five-dollar charge per student? Would, basically, I mean, like, I don't see how, if we have to increase costs to ensure safety off campus, how can we raise enough revenue to make this a, if we can define it, a success? And another question, or actually a point that I wanted to bring up, if it was considered to, the idea of discouraging out-of-town guests, has anybody thought of the idea of making the admission free to OU students and just charging guests that don't go to Ohio University?
Sure, a hundred bucks apiece.
Hey, I wouldn't be opposed to that because I'm a student, I wouldn't have to pay. But I just thought it might be a reasonable idea, especially for a year just starting out with this, to maybe if you're an Ohio University student, you can access Court Street for free, and that might, you know, serve your purpose a little better to keep out-of-towners out. But that's all I've had as far as questions. And all in all, I am against the fence and charging of admission mostly, but that's all I had.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Morgan Allen. I'm a senior marketing management major at Ohio University, and I live on eighty Mill Street. And I guess I just wanted to say a couple of things. I'll try to be really brief, my notes are a little bit scrambled. But first, collecting the money from the Halloween party guards instead of from the Athens taxpayers is definitely not what I don't agree with in this ordinance. But, and I know that we are really sensitive to the fact that seventy-five thousand dollars is a lot of money. But I just don't really believe that this ordinance is the right way to recoup that money back. It seems like our challenge is to make the money back, but it also seems like a challenge that has been voiced a little bit, is the fact that we need to change the perception of what the event is. Is it a sustainable community event, or is it just a free entitlement? And it seems like changing that perception is a lot harder than actually recouping the money. And I guess I see the fence as more of a Band-Aid for recouping the cost and not actually changing the perspective, the community perspective, on what the event actually is. And not only do I believe that it's the wrong way to initiate this kind of a culture change, but I also think it could be dangerous for reasons that have already been expressed tonight, the problems in the neighborhood, even upset community members who wish to visit residents on Court Street or visit businesses on Court Street during that night. And my final concern is just that not enough info and not enough opinions have been incorporated into this, or into this ordinance rather, to make a real informed choice. And I guess I'll just leave with a question of, I was sort of brought up earlier, but why give so much discretion to the safety department instead of doing the research together now and coming out with an ordinance after all of these questions about logistics and opinions have actually been answered? But thank you very much.
Michael Coppola of sixty-nine eighty-five Smith Run Road, Gloucester. I know several years ago, probably back in nineteen ninety-five, I think, the city up the franchise fee on the cable access up to its maximum amount of five percent. And I don't know how much money that cable ordinance was bringing in. I thought it was close to maybe almost like two hundred thousand dollars a year, I think, as far as franchise fees to the city. But over the past several years, it used to be divided evenly between public access and, I'm getting to your, I'll get to your point here. In other words, cable access has lost some of its money, almost maybe twenty thousand dollars a year, at least in the public, and I don't know if the same thing's going on with the government. Are cable access, are the cable subscribers actually helping to pay for this event already by, instead of having their monies go toward their public access stations? That's one aspect I have of that. You made a comment back after the first fracas, the big problem that we had in two thousand and two about fiduciary responsibility, and we started paring away money from cable access. I think they used to get seventy thousand dollars, and now they only get like fifty. I know the public access area does. And does that go into the general fund? And I'm not saying that this is a-
I think what we need to do here is take just a moment to talk about, when people come before council, you can ask rhetorical questions if you wish, but this is not going to be a time that any of us should try to engage. I have been chastised by my council members on more than a couple of occasions to make sure that we do not allow that kind of interchange. And just so people understand, so we don't get into a, have you stopped eating your wife-type questions, you know?
No, I'm not, I'm not asking, I don't need, I don't need a recent-
Okay, but can you tie this into Halloween real quickly?
That's, well, that's what I was asking about was, if the cables, if the cable subscribers were paying for public access, but they weren't getting what they were getting, and somewhere that money, they're still paying for the franchise fee, but it's going into the general fund, is that portion going to defray costs for Halloween? That's-
One of the biggest stretches of a financial question I've ever heard, but I have no idea how to even address it, and I'm not going to.
All right. That's, that was my first point. The other, the other point is, even though despite people would like to make this a fun event, Halloween has still been noted as the high night of anarchy going back to like the Middle Ages. And regarding the safety issue, you know, I hear that, you know, we spent like ten thousand dollars for additional police. I don't know where the police are coming from, but as I've been talking with people recently, we've had, I've had pretty much a major event on the east side of Athens County that I'm concerned about because once people start to know that all your police are congregating down in this three-block area, then they know that these other outlying areas are unprotected. And that's my major concern right now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to city council on ordinance oh three oh seven? Ordinance oh four oh seven, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street between Union and State Streets on October twenty-seventh and eight oh seven, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween On to ordinances for first reading. Oh oh five oh seven, an ordinance authorizing a development agreement with Folmont Green LLC and the Woda Group LLC. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, at this point, I move to table oh five oh seven.
Second.
The reason for tabling the ordinance, as we discussed in committee, there are some questions about the specific details about the emergency tap that Haver's Plains has requested in order to release this property from their water district. And I believe that we have a draft of that agreement, and that council members want time to take a look at that and have the, this specific agreement go through on the same timeline as the development agreement.
Motion second to table ordinance oh five oh seven, pardon me, further discussion on tabling of the ordinance only. Member Bane.
I just want to thank Debbie.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of tabling oh five oh seven?
Hi.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been tabled. Ordinance oh six oh seven, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Athens City-City Health Department to provide a sanitaryian and force wellhead protection regulation. Member Patterson.
Mr. President, this ordinance allows for engaging the health department to help to implement the wellhead protection. And on the first page of the proposed agreement, it outlines what services they would do, and that includes enforcement, random inspections, field complaints, inventory of both new and existing facilities, be the educational liaison, and keep records. And then on the second page of the agreement, it points out that this would be a cost of thirty-one dollars and thirty-five cents per hour and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents for overtime. This is something we discussed a while ago.
The eleventh of December.
The eleventh of December, and then somehow it just kind of floated around with the, with the fruitcakes and didn't get brought up. Is there a question?
It's always been my understanding that overtime is paid at five and a half of regular hours, and when I look at thirty-nine sixty-two, it's not-
hours, and when I look at 39.62, it's not one and a half times 31, 35.
Well, it's only part-time position.
So we are able to do that?
Yeah. It's not over 40 hours of work.
Okay, okay, then you are. Thank you.
And may I ask the mayor at this point, will we be needing a suspension on this at some point? I know we are a little behind.
Just all depends upon when you want it to start.
Okay. So not, it's not an emergency?
No.
Further discussion. Member Wild.
And this is for 20 hours according to this agreement, so it's halftime, right?
Yeah.
With apparently some ability to get slightly open.
Member Bishop.
I must, I may have missed the committee meeting in which this was discussed. So what does this person do exactly?
Implants the wellhead protection plan that we passed several years ago.
But what does that literally mean?
Enforcement.
Oh, enforces.
Random inspections, complaints, inventory of new and old facilities.
So do they give like citations or, I mean, in other words, if someone were, you know, not complying with the wellhead protection?
They would report that and it would be.
A fine or a?
Right, there's a fine involved.
Okay. And who do they report it to?
Nick Carr.
Other comments? Ordinance 0707, an ordinance amending the 07 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
Bill.
07 himself. Yes. Please, I'm sorry. Going back to 607, I missed a member of the audience wishing to speak to us.
Ariel Grimm, 24 Canterbury Drive. Yeah, I'm wondering a couple of things. We, the committee that had first put the ordinance together, had recommended a source water specialist to do some, or to do, I think, much more of this work. And I'm wondering what the background of this sanitarian is going to be because the code enforcement office has said that it was not capable of enforcing several parts of the wellhead protection ordinance because they didn't understand them. Now, I wonder if this sanitarian is going to understand them. I don't know what his or her background is supposed to be. And then I'm also wondering if anyone's done an analysis of the difference in cost between using the sanitarian plus the Egon Group as consultants as opposed to having a source water specialist.
The actual thinking behind this step was that it is progress. The EPA was very much pushing us to get someone to address questions and through whom they could work on educational workshops, and our, our own staff does not have the time to include that in their regular duties. So this was kind of a method to come up to get those jobs covered, and we can continue to look at that and possibly consider a, a person, maybe a half-time, someone who is retired, although Nancy's pointed out several times that these people are more apt to be the younger, more current educational situation and that this might very well work out to be the, the right solution for us. But it certainly is a step in the right direction and we, we need to, to get those activities occurring.
Okay, great. I guess the main thing is that I, it's not the final step, it's only the beginning step.
I just wanted to clarify also, the sanitarians typically are, or preliminary sanitarians, ones that haven't passed the test just, are typically either undergraduate graduates of the industrial hygiene program or the environmental health program at Ohio University. I mean, the ones that have been in Chuck Hammer's shop lately. And that would mean, you know, he, they're often new graduates and they have a pretty rigorous program in each case. And then they have to read a book about this sick called environmental engineering and pass a test. That's what, you know, they do and then they move on to bigger and better things, bigger cities.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak to 607?
Greg Broadhurst, 14 Granville Avenue in Athens. I was just going to say what Dr. Bain was saying about using people fresh out of the chemistry, biochemistry classes, I can appreciate that. I'm still working on mine. But also, I would like to make a recommendation that, in the future, that this, that a job description would require a person to be a certified environmental professional in the state of Ohio. I just wanted to add that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have already read 0707. Mr. Sands.
Mr. President, I move that we consider ordinance 0707 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This, excuse me, this ordinance, this ordinance basically amends the 2007 appropriation ordinance which we just passed. There are some anomalies that were discovered recently by the auditor's office and the mayor, and so we would like to make these corrections, which is what they are, to the appropriation ordinance as soon as possible. Paul.
Motion in the second to consider 0707 under suspension of council rules. Let's limit our discussion to suspension of the rules only.
So none of this came through committee?
No, this, we saw this for the first time today.
There are further discussion on suspension of the rules only. All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
You see, it has to be done. Aye.
Could I have a show of hands? Those opposed? Five to two because it does not pass under suspension of the rules.
There's no suspension.
There is no suspension.
And actually, I'm, I made this light, Paul, when I said, you asked if any of this had been come through committee. Actually, section one came through committee. The small little part that you probably didn't see up there.
$10,000.
Okay, so, Mr. President, this ordinance has two sections. Section one is indeed something we talked about, actually before the first of the year, I believe, we had a report from Community Food Initiatives who came and talked to us about their programs, educational programs regarding composting, community gardens, and food initiatives in our community. We supported these efforts to the tune of $10,000 last year. CFI asked if we would consider that again, so that's what section one is. Section two is, is correcting some mistakes that slipped into the 2007 appropriation ordinance, regardless of whether the auditor or the mayor wanted to talk about that.
All right, this is primarily my clerical error because what happened is two years ago when we changed from 600 series transfers to internal service fund and administrative support fees, and then our state auditor said that has to be a 200 and 300 series. So rather than change the whole Excel spreadsheet, which some of you have looked at, I created an appropriation to tab and then would manually go in and transfer things from 600 to the 200, 300. As you see, most of section two and three is that because what got printed up and attached to the budget was tab one, not tab two. But in addition to that, there are a number of areas such as the DUI court, the substance abuse mental health fund, that the judge comes in and says, oh, this is what I need for DUI court, or this is what I need for the substance abuse. We don't have a detailed sheet in the back that rolls up Excel-wise into it, so I just go into the final appropriation and plug those numbers. So when we started to reconcile the budget to what I had given the auditor, to what council passed, we saw we were off substantially. And then one item that was in there was we put $300,000 of sewer debt in sewer debt fund, and I forgot to move over in the column and say, add that in. It's added on down, but it wouldn't cross tab. So those are clerical type, but I felt that they were substantial in nature, that we really couldn't just change them up in the auditor's office and in the clerk's office, that we had to run it, I believed, as an ordinance through council, and that's why you have it tonight. So until it passes, we won't make any fund transfers to the internal service fund or to the general fund for internal services.
So my only issue for my office is we have the budget up and ready to load, people are waiting to spend their money. Are there funds that were not posted in that original budget that are in here now that don't have any money to work off of?
Well, now they have some to work off of.
So we'll post the old budget and then we'll have to go back in and make the changes?
Yes. Just, you need more work.
I get the sense the council, had this gone through a short committee meeting, might have found this a little more palatable to handle under suspension of the rules. And I'm certain that there's a couple of council members that do not understand the difference between a transaction class 600 and 200 and 300. Is that not correct? Okay.
Correct. We can have a meeting next time.
Yeah, and possibly consider it under suspension of the rules at second reading or any items about it that you wish to.
Might we have a short special session?
Next time.
Next, next Monday.
That would be fine with me.
After committee meeting, I assume?
I, a vote of four council members will do that at any point. And if that would be your desire, I have no trouble to do that. Okay, and I get the feeling that that is what council would like to do. But to see a list of expenditures like this without understanding it and having a little bit of time outside of the chambers to look it over and come to a level of comfort with it is what I really am hearing that council would like to do. I do not think that there's anything unfor it about 0707, though. Any other comments? Ordinance 0807, an ordinance amending ordinance 6003 and the Athens City Code establishing salaries for certain elected officials introduced by all members of council. Member Sands, are you speaking to this?
I guess I am. Mr. President, this ordinance is one that we pass every four years. We are required by the higher revised code to set the salaries of certain elected officials, the mayor, the auditor, the law director, city council members, and the city treasurer. Everybody except the treasurer falls on the same cycle, election cycle. And what this does is it sets salaries beginning in 2007 so that anybody who wants to run for any of these offices that are open for election in November will know what the salaries are that they would be asking the voters to put them into. The salary increases are a 3% per annum raise, which is, coincides with the raise issues that we've approved for most of our other employees. And I don't think, this needs to be passed before the filing date for these offices, which is?
February 22nd.
February 22nd, so this can go with regular, regular readings. Carol, did you have something to say?
Not yet.
Okay.
I do, Jen. It's 3% for all of these?
About. It's close.
Close to 3%.
Because it had to, there are 26 pay periods.
Right.
And this is adjusted to make those 26 pay periods come out evenly, so it's whatever is closest to that 3%.
Okay. Some of them are a little bit over and some of them are under.
Okay.
Other comments?
Well, I was just trying to do the math because I played with these figures just from a council standpoint. And of course, council only is two-year terms. And one of the issues that came up the last time was are we keeping up with the PERS legislation? And I know that there was some proposed huge jumps in the PERS regulation of what would be considered a year's service. At this time, it's $250 a month, so we're way above that. But then there was a suggestion that it jump in increments to 500 and then to 750. And I don't see them doing that really fast, but they could do, and this is the state, they could do it on the same way, a phased-in basis. And so part of my question is, is there any way to, two years from now, to revisit this if that changes, or is this just totally locked in?
Now, the answer on, on council, because you have two-year terms, you could revisit it.
So you could after the, or at the end of the next two-year term, if that came about? Because it's a huge jump. It would be a 30% increase.
You could do it for council only, yes.
Okay, all right.
Are there other comments? Ordinance 0907, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to file an application and manner and son agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the purpose of acquiring funds through the federal land and water conservation fund program and/or the state of Ohio Nature Works program. Member Patterson.
Mr. President, I move for suspension on whatever this is, 0907. Second. The reason for suspension is this, it's addressing a grant that would be due on February 1st. We don't meet until the evening of February 1st, so if we're going to do this, it has to be suspended.
I have just had it pointed out by the law director that we do not have an emergency clause, so you may wish to amend before we.
Mr. President, I move that we amend 07, 0907.
Why don't we withdraw our suspension? Well, okay, fine. Do I have a second to amend?
Second on the amendment.
Okay.
To add an emergency clause for obvious reasons.
Further discussion on the amendment only. All those in favor of amending 0907 to add an emergency clause?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Law Director.
0907 has been amended and now has an emergency clause.
And do we still have a motion to suspend, or do you want me to do it again?
Do it again.
I move that we suspend the rules on 0907.
Second suspension.
The reason for the suspension is that the grant is due February 1st and we do not meet again until the evening of February 1st.
Motion in the second to suspend the rules on 0907. Further discussion on suspension only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is being considered under suspension of council rules.
Mr. President, 0907 is to allow the.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. President, I move to adopt 0907. Second. I need a nap. Second. This is to be able to apply for the Nature Works grants. This is something that we've done every year. However, until 4 o'clock this afternoon, there was no direct knowledge of the availability of funds. And the funds that will be available will be 20,000 to 25,000, and there have been discussions about projects, including West State Shelter and East State Shelter, basketball, nine hockey, inline hockey rink repaving, our ballfield lighting. And so in order to even apply for these, we need this.
Further discussion. Member Phillips. Member Phillips?
Is there a requirement of match?
With Nature Works, no.
Okay.
It's just free money.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 0907?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 1007, an ordinance vacating Altmont Terrace. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, there are three ordinances here that relate to vacation of streets in the University Estates project. We discussed these in committee a few weeks ago, and at that time, felt like we needed to know that this was part of a larger plan, that it would fit into the planning process. The Planning Commission has reviewed the plat revisions and have approved the plat revisions contingent upon the vacation of the roads. An emergency access easement has been arranged so that Greenview, the one that we talked about, is a secondary access into the project. Chief Troxel has looked at that and thinks that it's adequate for emergency access, and we have an easement to use it for emergency access. The Altmont, as you may recall, was constructed in a different location, so when the plat is filed, Altmont will be... In the new location where it actually exists, will be on the plat. And the bond is still there and will be applied to the portion that hasn't yet been constructed. And our street department has looked at the part that has been constructed and is satisfied with it. Mary Abel, do you have anything you want to add to that background information?
I think you've covered it all.
Okay. And I think there are some representatives of University Estates here, so if people do have questions, they're available.
Number Wild?
So these streets won't... Will no longer exist. Is that the case? Forever and ever?
When we pass it, you mean? Right.
Member Bishop?
I was just wondering what this does to, like, the flow and the access to the existing or proposed homes. I mean, is it easier, is it harder? Are there going to be no houses there?
Not to the existing homes, because there's...
Well, there's nothing existing.
Stone Ridge was off in the commercial area. Altmont is in an R3 area that's just been relocated. And the only difficulty would be Stone View or Greenview, because it would have... It just goes down and links into Armitage Road. But it's a dead-end road, so unless... Till the golf course gets built. But the clubhouse is up at the top, so...
Okay, well, that's what I wondered, how this affects the...
I don't think it's going to check traffic flow. We just want to make sure we have emergency access.
And there would still be lots of emergency access.
Well, it's a very long cul-de-sac, and Altmont is too. And there's two easements that they're granting us. One is off of University Estates Drive to past where the clubhouse is on Altmont, which will also be used as a work construction road that will be done in such a manner we can take a fire truck up if we needed to, or another, an ambulance. And then the other one is Greenview, which is currently a gravel road. That is sufficient in the fire department's expectations. They've driven up it, and say, as long as it's maintained, they can use that as an emergency if something is blocking University Estates Drive up to those two points.
I just have one other question. So the vacating of these roads, is it because fewer units are going to be built? I mean, I guess why were they planned in, and now they're not needed anymore?
I think it's a timing issue. We questioned it, the Planning Commission and others. I mean, Phase 1 of the subdivision was very ambitious, and it had a lot of areas in it. And I think that there was not a total understanding on the developer's part that the city would require a bond on all of the roads that were included in what was platted. That then creates a financial problem to the... Of cash flow, because you're going to tie up a bond money and cost on roads that you don't plan to build unless the development does build out in its other aspects. And so you get to those, and who knows how long that takes. So I think what the developer has said is that we would love to be able to come back to you and replat these roads, but let market conditions and let us be at the point of we're really going to build it and post the bond before we would consider any replating. And you don't know who's going to buy what. That's why, you know, you have an overall plan for that total area as recommended by, right now, through preliminary approval of the Planning Commission. Just don't know.
All right, thank you.
Market will control it.
Yep.
Member Flowers?
I have a question about the Greenview lane. That's the emergency access entrance, right? So if it's still up to standards to be used as emergency access, and we grant the vacation of the lane, is there a bond still on that area, street?
No.
It becomes a private road.
It's a private road.
That's why they have to give us an easement to use a private road.
And there's not currently a bond on that?
Thank you.
Yeah. The only one that currently has a bond is part of Altmont, in the place that it was constructed.
Supposed to. Or the place that it wasn't going to be.
Number Wild?
So it won't be maintained, or it will be maintained?
The gravel road?
Yeah.
It will be maintained by the developer to its current standards, according to the easement.
Which is satisfactory to the chief of the fire department.
Yes.
Are the bonds for all the roads presently built in place?
Yes. I mean, part of them have been released because they have been... You know, it's not... 100% bond is not needed. There are some problems with the roadways. We've not accepted any of them. There still is... Would then be... So we've retained a portion of, like on University Estates, in the cul-de-sacs that go off on it. And then 100% of what would be Altmont Phase 2, which is being platted in this replating, and the... A short cul-de-sac off of it. And then... But it's done up until the clubhouse area, and that's the reason... We have two problems. One, we have a shorter cul-de-sac, but if all of Phase 1 gets built, it's a cul-de-sac. So how do you have an emergency entrance? So we agreed to create a second road that doesn't... It exists today only really is for heavy-duty equipment. It'll need gravel. It'll need some more work done on it. But that will be where construction vehicles are planned to be used to build further sections for further condominiums, because they're not... Don't want to run the heavier traffic on the roads and hurt them, because that's what's happened to a certain extent on University Estates Drive. And there's no sense in doing a lot of major repair to those, i.e. then you don't turn them over to the city until they get back into good shape. If you're still going to do that heavily loaded truck that is carrying all the bricks and the concrete block and everything else, especially in weather like now where almost everything's pretty soft, you may tear it up some.
So you have... You say the bond's not for the entire road, so you have section of the roads that are bonded, a section of the roads that are not bonded?
No, you have sections constructed and sections not constructed where we have a bond.
Okay.
Because if you start out with a $500,000 road, and you've already spent $300,000, let's say, putting the base down, doing the first two coats, obviously you aren't going to need $500,000 to complete that road. You're going to need $200,000, or somewhere around that range. So what's commonly done in the construction is that you start out with a full bond, and then at intervals, as things get completed and a PE engineer signs off that they're completed, and you have the compaction tests and everything else, you release that amount of road bond, because there's no sense bonding something that's already done.
This is the maintenance bond.
Maintenance bond only kicks in once you accept them, and then that has to be for two-year period.
So this is a construction bond?
It's a construction bond. We have to guarantee that people that are going to be buying those lots, that are on a platted road, that they're going to have a road to city standards to get to their lot. And that's what the bond does, because if the developer doesn't build it, we take the bond money or whatever we need of the bond money to actually complete it to city specifications.
In terms of a... Since you're on the Planning Commission, in terms of final plat approvals, how often are final plats changed after approval? Amended, adapted, percentage-wise?
It all depends... Some of it on the size of it and the reasoning, because this dropping of... I think, as I said earlier, just a little too ambitious of a Phase 1 plan. We have had some minor revisions, because when you go to put the roadway in, your tests say, oh, I got to do this, or you discover a new utility. In this case, that was one of the reasons. The gas company had an easement and would not allow certain things, and so you had to move the road a little bit or move a lot line a little bit. So those are why we consider those minor revisions. And a major portion of it, what we can't do is the vacating of streets. But if we have council do that, we, as a Planning Commission, felt you're involved in essence in the decision on the replating, because if you approve these, yep, it's then replatted that way, and you know that by your action. If you don't approve them, it's not replatted, and you know that.
Well, there's some other comments. Member Phillips?
I just wanted to confirm. It's my understanding that these vacations do not create any landlocked lots, that the lots that on the plat, as you've amended it or contingently amended it, every lot will have road frontage.
Yes, every lot will have road frontage.
Member Bain?
I would like to say that I think building a road when it's not platted there is very curious to me, but I'm going to refrain from getting at hominum. I've done enough of that today. But what I would like to know is, between now and the next time we meet, I'm going to try and go back to the plat and find out... List each street and find out what bond is on them, because I just get confused after a while. But my main question, Rick, is, are those villas in Phase 2, or are they in Phase 1? I know that's irrelevant to this issue.
They're in Phase 1.
They're in Phase 1. They're within the area we platted initially two years, three years ago in December. Is that right? I didn't...
I think it was about six years ago.
Oh, time flies when you're having fun. Okay. All right. I just wanted to know. So the... All of the developments are confined to that initial map that we voted on?
Yes, and I have...
Or some people voted on.
In my files, there was the proposed new plat and the one that exists now, so if you could... I'll make sure, copy that, that counts. I know you have the proposed one. You should have the old one, but if you don't, I could get that up to you. If anybody wants to come in or talk to Ray or myself or other Planning Commission members, we'd be happy to.
And the other question is, have we received the fees yet for the subdivision?
Well, this is not... Yeah.
The preliminary? The preliminary plat?
No.
Okay. They were in place when, I think. If not, maybe not.
No, and no PUD preliminary fees are in place yet. Now, we discussed that at the Planning Commission, and that was one of the things they needed to be due.
Thank you.
Was that... Because what they asked for was the entire 800 and some acres to be... Again, I think it's too ambitious, but that's what the developer wants to do. And they want to pay the preliminary fee for over 1,000 units. I don't know why, but... And then come in and just do a final as they're going to build each one and pay the other half of the fee. But, I mean, I wouldn't... I didn't recommend it to them. I tried to talk them out of it, but that's what they wanted to do.
Okay.
Because they felt that it was important for their marketing plan, as they explained, it costs money, to say, yes, this is a total plan for the 800. It's been endorsed by the city Planning Commission, and you have better assurances that, yes, that's what's going to be there in that location. If you buy into their overhaul development.
So in other words, just to make sure I understand this, you and the Planning Commission are going to pass, or you have passed contingent on this, a plat, I mean, a preliminary plat for 800 acres?
Yes, there was two.
And you will bring it in, and they will bring it back to you in segments?
They will bring it in in segments. You'll never see it until it's in final stage. But, I mean, it's on file with the city, but you don't have to approve a preliminary.
No, I know. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
Number Wild?
Since it's in the city now, in annex, could every sign is delineating where the wellhead protection area is, since we have them on the west side of town?
Sure.
Okay?
Good idea.
Just wondering. Okay. And it's just a point of...
Can we keep to the ordinance before us?
It's our last shot at it, boy.
Okay, that's it, I'm done.
Other comments? Members of the audience, is there anyone wishing to comment? Ordinance 1107, an ordinance vacating Greenview Lane. Member Phillips, does this pretty much follow the exact same discussion?
Mr. President, I think we discussed it. Please.
Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Oh, there would be, of course. Number Wild?
So we're going to vacate this street, and then we're going to get a street added to the final.
Depends on what the vote is.
Okay.
Let me do it.
Ordinance 1207, an ordinance vacating Stone Ridge Court. Again, member Phillips?
This is part of what we discussed previously.
Are there other points to be made? Announcements and other business? Member Patterson?
Mr. President, I move that the nomination of Winter Reeser be accepted to the Arts Commission.
Second.
Winter Reeser is a graduate student at Ohio University, as well as a permanent resident of Athens, and she brings youth and energy to the commission and has lots of good ideas of what we might be able to do on a community basis. And I very much recommend her endorsement.
Motion and a second to recommend Winter Reeser as a member of the Arts Commission. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations to Winter Reeser. Are there other announcements or other business? Member Bain?
Mr. President, I'd like to schedule a meeting of the City Services Committee, and I would like to have some time set aside for anyone who wishes to comment on the plan to have a chance to do that. But I would especially like to have a special session at 7:00 to read the ordinance on the finance.
Okay.
And any other ordinance?
And any other ordinance that the proponent would like to recommend? Member Bishop?
Communication Committee meeting.
Environment Committee. Talk about possibly trying to get a hazardous pickup, waste pickup. I'll try talking to Roger Bale about that.
Member Phillips?
Planning and Development Committee to discuss the possibility of a floodplain intern and the possibility of adding site plan review for any proposed development.
And also to that, maybe a couple of things to subdivision regulations. Remember, bring up the question of notifying neighbors when there's a variance request to split, so they can come and talk about it. That was one of the things that we... At least talk about it.
Sure. Okay. Member Flowers?
Transportation Committee, please, to discuss Stewart Street sidewalk and the 24-hour parking enforcement. There was a letter in the paper in the A-News today, maybe we should address in committee. Also, I wanted to make an announcement that the Beautification Day group, which was the men's water club water pool team that did it last year, it's now all of club sports that has taken this under its wing. I met with them earlier... Wait, not this week, last week. What is it, Monday, Tuesday? And then with them last week about the plan. We went over things that happened last year, things that they can do to improve. They're going to do surveys and things like that and find out what they can do better this year. It'll be taking place again, I think, in May. There's a rain date as well, which is a week later from the original date. Anyway, I'll stop talking about it, because they will be here next week to come and present to us an overview of last year, the feedback they got, and then what they're going to be doing and taking on this year. And so if council can just be prepared to give them as much feedback as they possibly can, because they really want to get going on this now.
That is so cool. So... Member Patterson?
I'm not asking for a committee meeting, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't be looking ahead to the fifth Monday and possibly scheduling that night for things like the reports of the Tourism Chamber of Commerce, Parks and Recreation. I'm beginning to hear from them that they're ready with reports, and so it seems like that might be a good use of that, or Friday, Monday.
Member Sands?
I don't have anything right now. Certainly, the special session is...
I'll probably have something on Mulligan Road.
Yeah. Yeah, probably.
Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Uriel.
In the past couple of weeks, a few items, communications items have come up, and I'm glad there's a Communications Committee meeting, because maybe some of this can be addressed. It's stuff that we've talked about before, but in letting people know what was happening about the ordinance to go into, to enter into the agreement with the Edwards Group, it was extremely difficult for us to get the word out as to what was happening here. And so I guess, I'm thinking, in this time of electronic communications, it may be easier for the city to kind of make available easily to people an explanation of what's going on, and it would also be accepted more from the city than from the South Side Community Association. We don't quite have the credibility to start talking about this stuff. And so, I'm not sure, I'm just asking that, oh, this and the other thing, public hearings, you know, the way people, unless you're a council groupie like us, the way people hear about this stuff is that they're supposed to notice a little blurb in the newspaper somewhere that says it's time for a public hearing. And, you know, I'm just thinking, we should really move into the 21st century and catch up with this. And also, we have, just yesterday, the South Side has, we set up about three years ago an emergency notification system, and we did manage yesterday to get the word out to maybe 100 people about the boil order, but it should have been much better publicized, you know, so I really think that that should be addressed again. One of our South Side members, who moved away a couple of years ago, for years, had been bringing it up at the, what do you call them, the sector meetings, you know, can't we put a sign up when this happens? So, you know, I just would like to bring up these communication issues again.
And I think next week's Communication Committee meeting will be a wonderful place to address these.
Yes, yes, and thank you, Mary, for raising those issues.
Are there any other? Yes, Greg.
Greg Broderick, 14 Grandville, Athens, Ohio. I just want to compliment council this evening for supporting the intent of the comprehensive plan, the spirit of that, and to encourage you to move on as quickly as you will be allowed to, to pass the comprehensive plan, and encourage the administration to hire a city planner, so that we can put things in perspective and prevent things like leapfrogging. Does anybody know what leapfrogging is? That means like jumping away and moving back, which is a precipitator, a sprawl, and usually ends up causing a negative balance sheet in terms of overall development. Thanks.
Is there anyone else? And that's, and really, last item on our agenda other than adjournment, is an executive session for our city council, where we will be discussing some pending litigation. It'll take about five minutes to shut down the cameras and give people a chance to ask council members questions, but do I have a motion?
I move that we go into executive session for pending litigation.
To include?
To include the mayor, and the law director, and members of council.
Yes.
Yes. Did I get a second?
Thank you.
Was it a second?
Yes.
Sam, give you a second, you had a second.
Where is the letter?